It is seven o'clock and this is the West Newbury Planning Board meeting. And it is being conducted remotely. The details are located on our website for anybody who wishes to reference why we are doing this. First item on the agenda is a deer run follow up on the housing contribution invoices and a Form J lot release. My understanding is that from Sue that Mr. Crowe is not here tonight, but I'll let Sue pick up and discuss those two items.
Yeah. So yes, Mr. Crowe said his engineers could not get things together for that request tonight. But as you know, we've talked about two forms and I'll pull those up in just a second. Relative to those, the housing contribution invoice, which needs to be paid in advance of his requesting that certificate of occupancy. And of course, the Form J lot release, which he also needs for that. So I did, those were in your packet. There's were a few minor changes that I've made, so I'll pull up the, I'll share the ones that are corrected. Just give me one moment while I figure out how to share the screen. It always seems to look different every time I do it. What's that?
Keeps you on your toes.
I guess. Oh, maybe it's. That's so weird. Oh, it's in bright green. Okay, so I want the. Your own performance. We'll go with the invoice first. Tell me if you can see it because I can't.
Yep.
And let's see, was it control? Yes. Is that easily viewed or?
That's fine.
You need it.
Yeah, I can't, I can't see it. I don't have, I have a black screen. Does everybody else see it?
Yes.
I see it.
Isn't that interesting? You keep going, Sue. That's all right.
Okay. So my understanding is that we would, the, the housing contribution would be based on the two units he's asking release for. So in total, there are six units that he'll be paying a housing contribution for. You'll notice that I've included in this invoice, I've tried to provide as much information as possible, including the, how you compute it. So. It's the, the price of the unit times two, because we're releasing two units times point oh four, that's the formula. And it's amounts to a contribution of seventy one nine twenty. So I've, I've. I've emailed him to ask him if that was his understanding that he would be pay, whether he would be paying all of it or. But I, my guess is that he would. Assume he would be paying for the two units and then. We would request the rest when the others are, are come on the market. Because you really don't know what those sales prices might be.
That's right.
When they get.
Sue and I talked a little about this, you know, we can. Look to adjust if he's what under or over or whatever, but that's the listing price seemed like a logical approach. But you know, if anybody else feels otherwise.
Just a question, which, what accounts do, does this money go into?
Yeah, that's a great question. So in the zoning bylaw, it talks about account, a workforce housing count, but that was closed down. And it go, it will go directly into the Affordable Housing Trust.
Great.
So we, I think we do need to, to keep our bylaws and our operations. In sync, I think we should make those changes to the bylaw, just kind of to make sure that our accounting is, you know, is the same.
That's a good. Sounds great.
Sure, the town accountant will agree with you.
Yeah, she did. She was quite horrified that we didn't, hadn't done it. Previously, but.
So is that something we'll need to do or can we vote on it now?
Well, I think.
Question.
That's just changing the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, so we can change that. We could vote to, you can decide to bring it up at the Fall Town Meeting if you want. But I would like confirmation that this is the invoice that you'd like me to send to Mr. Crowe.
I think so. I, the other thing that we might want to think about in the bylaw, and I think Sam's here, he might have some ideas, is. Somehow clarifying in the bylaw, the mechanism for this calculation.
Yes.
It's all, we always have a kind of a squishy conversation every time it comes up and I, it's pretty tough for a developer and for the town to plan based on squishy.
Yeah, I think having a formula as to what's owed, you know, based on what price. And then also having the timing down as to the, the when, not just a prior to occupancy, because that's a little. I, I mean, I guess it's okay, but it would be. I don't know. There's, there's got to be a better way to nail it down just a, a bit more.
Yep.
I think before we're ready to go to town meeting, we might need some more conversations about this and that would need a public hearing, right? So I'm not sure we're gonna.
Yeah, this is, yeah, if we, if we were just going to change the, the title of the, who the check gets written to, I think we could probably do it, but if. It sounds like there's some interest or clarity maybe needed in the language of the law and I don't see that we have time for that.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I've been looking over, double checking the formula to the best of my ability here. And in the formula, which is on page forty two, five F six. It refers to the number of new units. And, you know, it jumped to my mind, does that number of new units include the affordable units or not? And then I looked up at definitions and it's not clear there. So. I think, I think there's a chance to, to tweak this and make it better beyond just who you write the check to.
It also, the language that you just said, right? Makes one wonder if he's supposed to be paying it all. Or if he has to pay it closer to when he, when he is actually finished and there is a known. Sales base it on. So we, this is kind of a.
In my mind, I, I thought, you know, this would be the average price based on all the units sold. And here we're doing it at piecemeal. I think this works. I'm okay with this, but again, I think there's room here to tweak this, add clarity to our existing.
Yeah.
By law.
Yep.
Well, are we looking to have him pay this now?
Yes, yes.
Now, he's gonna want to get those units, get the certificate of occupancy so he can sell the units. So I think for this one, I think the sense of the board is we should forge ahead, but I think we need to rethink for the future.
Yes.
Yeah, the by, the bylaw states that it needs to be paid in advance of receiving a certificate of occupancy. And as Sam has pointed out. Certificate, certificate of occupancy is usually needed in order for, for financing, for bank financing and such. So. It's a linear process.
Caught in a bit of a, a loop here, yeah.
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 I mean, and there are going to be certain instances where a developer might not have the money until it's closed.
Yes.
Or, but.
That's not our problem.
No, that's right. Not our problem. Not something we can address.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, again, this is something we'll all hash out, but.
Okay.
You know, we, we. Yeah, and, and you know.
It's important that we get that money, yes.
That procedure stuff, I mean, we do, I assume we have regulations. Regulations don't require a change in the bylaw, but we may have to change the bylaw to refer to regulations.
We have to change the bylaw if the bylaw is not synchronized with our new thinking.
Yes. Well, alls I'm saying is I think there's room here when it comes down to exactly what happens and what forms to file and all that kind of stuff. I think we could go to a regulation mechanism. And, you know, that would probably be better for the future too, but there's still changes in the bylaw I think we need to make to. Make it easier to understand.
Yes, both, both need to be.
Yeah, we, we could probably just put in. You know, the, the detail for the payment is noted in regulations or something and not have to have the formula in, in the bylaw.
Yeah, yeah. But again, this is stuff, this is stuff to work.
For the discussion, yeah. Hold those thoughts.
Yeah.
Yeah. And just to clarify, right now, there are no regulations regarding that, but it is, I agree, it's something that could be developed. And that way you'd have more, you could be flexible. Depending on the circumstances.
Yeah, I, I was thinking the stuff of exactly, you know, how you do it in the sequence and all that kind of stuff, that could be covered in regulations. And then it'd be easy for us to adapt. In the future.
Great idea. I'm gonna.
Depending on the size of a development, for instance, it could be being built out over quite a length of time.
Yes.
Exactly.
Want to do it differently than four units or.
And I think at the time we put this together, we were thinking of, you know. Everything being done at once kind of stuff. And then once you had all your market rate units, you could take the average price of that and, yeah.
Yes. All that being said, I, I have to say it's sort of nice. I feel. Pretty good when I drive by the end of that driveway, that new road. And think that there will be eight units in there, you know, that seems like a.
Yeah.
Step in the right direction in some level.
The other thing that I, if you want to talk good news, is the fact that we just had the wettest July in the last hundred years, apparently.
Wow.
And, and yet the, the system appears to have worked all right for stormwater.
Good.
That was a real test. There were some deluges for sure.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Sue, you're all set with the invoice. You want to do the, the Form J, talk about that?
Yep. Can you, can you all see that?
I can.
Okay, so the Form J is, this is your standard and I changed the date. I believe we've got it correct.
Would you do me a favor?
Yes.
Up near the top, you've got clipboard font paragraph styles. In the paragraph section of commands in the upper right, there's a little paragraph mark. If you could just click that off, it'd make it easier for me to read.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
There you go. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So this is tricky. I'm just now thinking this. This refers to all the lots.
Except when you get down to the bottom, it counts out lot four.
That's a little bit. Non-specific, just the word lot four, isn't it? Let me just look at this one carefully.
I can.
Said lots are hereby released. Said lots to me seems to refer back to the, whatever was shown in the recorded document. You know what I mean?
Yep, I can, let's see.
So we're just, so lot four on that drawing is the one that includes these new units, number one and number three?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Does anyone agree that it might be useful to expand that a little? To say something, a lot for as shown. But.
On the plan.
Well, yeah, but how do we say, but now. Known as, you know, number one and number three, Major Boyd Drive or something. You know, and somebody looks back at this in the future. I, it needs to be clear that we're not releasing everything. I mean, maybe lot four is sufficient, but.
You say.
I think more.
You know, lot, can you say being shown as lot four, you know, on the plan? Where, so you get. Said lots referred to twice above.
So, let me see.
So say, said lots being shown a, you know, or being shown as lot four, you see where that is, Sue?
Right here.
It's in two places. Yeah. So that, yeah.
Said lots being shown on a plan entitled Dear Run and added here.
You could say the lot being shown as lot four on a plan entitled.
Maybe said lot four.
Well, I would say being shown as lot four on a plan entitled.
Being shown. Thank you.
Yeah, so maybe that's all I need. Excuse me.
Yep. And the same thing, that's, that's great to, just further, where it says said lot again. It's a lot being shown as lot for, see that? You just had your cursor over it. Yep, there you go.
Do I add that same thing, being shown?
Yeah, same language, yeah. So said lot being shown as lot for, I mean, it's a, is hereby released.
Yeah, there we go. That's all I need.
So not being shown.
Maybe we don't need all, yeah, maybe we don't need all that stuff at the end then because we sort of clarified it.
Think I should just take this out?
I don't know, since it's got two structures on it, I think that should be referenced somewhere.
Yeah, that might be helpful because somebody in the future is going to call along and think this means number four, Major Boyd Drive. We just looked at these thirty years ago, you know, they get really confusing.
Yep.
Yep, I think it's fine and it's, it's easy just to see it, you know, where it's kind of called out there. It's, it's clear that it's lot four, so you can, yep.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just ensuring against future confusion based on my past confusion.
I appreciate that because I've been confused about the past.
Regularly. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Clear about the future, huh?
Very clear on that.
I know every day it goes by, my past gets longer, so.
Exactly. It's a bandwidth problem. Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
So my understanding on this is that it only needs to be, I believe it only needs to be. Signed by the chair. Do you recollect or do you all to, want to sign?
Well, even before we talk about signing, aren't we owed as-bills that were kind of.
Oh, yes. So this one, this is on the final release, I mean.
Why he's not here.
We're not voting to release yet, so.
Okay, okay. I don't remember what we've agreed on the signing.
I think it was in the regulations.
Since we, we did this.
We haven't been doing this much.
Probably had trakes.
Oh, wow, really? Could be.
Probably, yeah.
Wow. Seems to have been quiet.
Yeah, it really has. You want to check back on that, Sue? And then before the next meeting and.
Yeah, because we have to vote at the next meeting anyway, so.
So.
By then we'll know.
Is it his, I guess, is it his expectation to be at the August fifteenth meeting with this?
So I think, I think so. I think he would, he would prefer to do that if his engineer is ready. I don't know, Sam, if he's had any discussion with you.
No, he still has final inspections to, to get done, so he's got a little, little ways to go still.
Okay, so it may or may not be ready by, okay. And you would be, he would submit the as-bills to you or to the planning board? Do you know?
So are you looking for, because I usually just get a foundation as-built?
Get them, we would send them to Meridian. I think, don't we?
Okay.
Yes.
You know, what they were expecting, because he's the one that's, he's the one that's been asking for them, so religiously, too.
So it's the site plan as-bills, but nothing else?
Right.
Okay.
Well, we're looking for some kind of drainage as-bills. Remember, you said he couldn't inspect them. But they didn't call for an inspection timely, so he needs the drawings to make sure that was correct.
Right.
Among whatever else he needs.
Maybe it can be in his last report, so.
Pardon?
What is, I think it might be in his last report, what he's looking for.
Oh, yes. Okay. So it's just the, this site plan as-bills that you are requesting from him and it's not the building or anything, that's.
Right.
That's Sam's.
Right. This is just to satisfy Meridian's.
Great.
And, and the obligation to provide, you know, the drawing of what, what they put in the ground.
Great.
Okay, are we all set there?
I think so.
Okay, any other questions on that from anyone?
Do you? Yeah, um, this morning I sat in on another Zoom meeting with the Sawmill Brook. What they're calling the Sawmill Brook Conservation Project with two people from Green Belt. And weren't we going to talk about this at some point? I think it's on the agenda somewhere.
Agenda. Yep, yep.
Yeah.
That's further down.
You want to wait, you want to wait?
Yes.
I'll do it then. Thank you.
Please. Okay. Okay. So why don't I, I still have a, a black screen.
Oh, I'm so sorry. So the next one up is the discussion of the proposed changes to the non-conforming structures and uses by law.
I, I got some problem. I can't see these things. Okay.
All right. So Sam's here. I'll pull that up and we'll let.
I have a question for Sam.
There it is.
There are four places, I think I found them all, in which. It talks about the special permit and the Board of Appeals, but since the planning board does that in this town, shouldn't those all be changed? Or am I missing something?
Does what? Gives relief or?
Yeah, special permits are done by the planning board in West Newbury, not by the Board of Appeals.
Okay.
But is this a different situation?
Yes, this, the special permit relating to non-conforming structures goes back to forty eight.
Okay.
The state. Zoning bylaw, so it would just be them. You know, basically determine that the non-conforming.
No, yeah, I understand, I understand what the determination is. I just didn't know that they were the, so is that clear in other sections of our bylaw? That they have that particular special permitting power? I didn't look because I just assumed.
I don't think there's anything clear in our bylaw.
Well, that's enough for another day, but yeah. I, I just know that it says this, you know, the special permit granting authority shall be the planning board.
Okay, I'll have to go back and take a look at it. I mean, it, it's. It really, in this case, should be the zoning board of appeals when it comes to non-conforming uses relating to forty eight, I want to say in section six. They, under the state law, are usually the relief granting authority for special permits for non-conforming uses and structures. I'll have to go back and take a look to see what the language is, just to make sure that. You know, if it needs clarification before we move this forward, we, we clarify. Uh, because yeah, I don't, I don't want to cause more confusion in our attempt to clarify.
Yeah, no, I don't have a problem with, with their doing it. I just don't want to make some inherent contradiction in the bylaw.
Do you remember Sam, what section that is?
So right.
Chapter forty eight?
Forty eight, uh, the non-conforming section?
Yeah.
I want to say it's forty eight six, my.
Existing structures.
And right now in our bylaw, it says. That the issuance of a building is special permit issued by the planning board or board of a special appeal, board of appeals in accordance with the provisions of this bylaw.
Okay, perfect.
By the way, Sam, I, it says a couple of times. And not substantially make things worse, basically. I forget, the word is not substantially. Make it worse. Where is it now?
Be more detrimental, it's right at the bottom.
Yeah, not, not be substantially more detrimental. I mean, that, that begs, of course, somebody arguing with you about what's substantial.
Or even what's detrimental.
Are you, are you comfortable with the language? Is that, you can work with that?
So this is pretty.
Not like I see anything, anywhere around it, but.
Yeah, it, it, it's pretty standard language for these sections throughout most of the towns and mass that adopt this type of language. What that leave, for the most part, most of what people decide to do is not substantially more detrimental in these cases. And it leaves me with a determination of do they go to the zoning board or not for that? And yeah, I'm comfortable with that. You know, if someone's adding a deck behind their house, no one's going to see it. It's nowhere near anything and.
Oh, yeah, I, I understand that concept. I'm, I'm picking a, I'm, I'm imagining a case where you're like, no, this. This needs to go to the ZBA. I can't let you off here. And they're saying, well, who determines what's substantial here?
I am the.
Sam says I do.
Authority. Authority, so they can, they can either choose to go to the zoning board to challenge my opinion, or they can go to the zoning board and see if they can get a special permit. Either way, they can go to the zoning board, so I'm real comfy with it.
As, as long as you're comfy with the language, that's, that's one of these things where I, you know, I don't, how could you possibly define things? Quantitative.
You can, yeah, that's why I like the building code much better than zoning, because a foot is a foot to everyone. But I'm stuck with this part too.
Gotcha.
So I, I had a question in reading through this, um. You know, if, if uh in a butter uh makes a comment at, at a hearing um about something that the applicant is uh trying to do that's non-conforming today, they don't like it. The outcome, they can appeal that decision. Um, is, is there? What if they don't like your decision? I mean, is it, is it then they go to the Board of the ZBA or, or what? I, I was just a little unclear.
No, my decisions are appealable even once they're issued, so if I issue a permit and the neighbor does not like that, they can both appeal the permit and my decision that that permit was based on. There are timelines and, you know, standards for that, but uh, yeah, you know, and there's specific language in forty-eight and the building code as to how long they have to appeal, what the rules are. Um, and then also stuff that protects the neighbors too, so if the neighbor's really nasty and they wait till they build their garage and then appeal after it's built, that's a no-no either, so they, they, you know, it has to be within a reasonable amount of time once work is evident, so. Uh, but yeah, no, my, my decisions are never the final, it's um, you know, usually a board, then court, and then higher courts, but yeah, no, I'm just the, I'm just the start.
Yeah, that, is it, is it common to have, you know, language that just kind of says that in, in this, or it's, it's kind of already in, in, you know, um, you know, forty-eight and that's the way it is?
Yeah, it's already, already in forty-eight, you're appealed certainly held by state law.
Okay, all right, that's fine, thank you.
Yeah, no, it makes it easy on our part.
Yep. I, I basically didn't have any issue with, you know, moving forward with this, what are the other board members?
I think clarification and making his life easier are good.
Thank you.
I, I just had a question, has KP Law reviewed this one too?
Uh, they have not yet, but they, my language in both Newbury and Groveland are very similar. Uh, as well as the state model bylaw for, for this, so I you know, prior to getting it to town meeting, I would certainly have them take a quick look at it, but I don't anticipate any issues.
Right, did they review them uh in those towns, Sam?
Uh, it was.
Was it a different firm?
Yeah, Tony Penske in Newbury and I think it was KP in Groveland.
Okay, yeah, it was, I had the same question about substantially more detrimental, you know, as a standard.
Yeah, there was a finer point we could put on it, but.
Okay.
I don't think there's great language out there, so.
I also suspect it doesn't come up much.
No, this.
No, not real, I, I, you know, anything that's minor, it, you know, the problem right now is we end up sending stuff to the zoning board for minor projects for relief, which is a waste of everyone's time.
Yeah.
Um, I think, you know, we've had one um one that I would have sent to them that was actually a, a reasonably large addition, it doubled the size of the house. Um, they still got permission through zoning to do it because it was in, in concert with the rest of the neighborhood as far as the size of the houses. They just didn't have the frontage, so, uh, but on, on that, in that case, I, I felt the volume of the house and the extent of the, the change uh could, could certainly be viewed as detrimental, and there was one neighbor that didn't like it and opposed it. Uh, but overall, it was tough to oppose your neighbor building something smaller than you live in when you have the same size block next door, so they just don't want to look at a bigger house, which I don't blame them, but not really the criteria.
Okay, um. Do we need to uh vote that, you know, we accept this as is, Sue, or to move this ahead so we can put on the, the fall town meeting?
So I think that you want to, to accept it as something that you would put before the voters, so two things, that means you need, uh, you know, the hearing, of course, and it also, you need to put it on what we are going to talk about a little further down is um the, the um select board has asked for a list of um warrant articles for town meetings, so we could add that to that list, that would make it official.
Okay, anyone object to, to doing that?
Nope.
No.
No.
Okay.
Fantastic, thank you, you know, this will help considerably.
We will, uh, I think we had already discussed, I don't know if it was just with Sue or with the rest of us, we'll try to put, we'll put both of these together for the hearing uh with the ADU bylaw.
Right. And with those, I'm glad to show up too, so if people have questions, I have no, no problem.
Well, as, as you know, the turnout for those is less than stellar sometimes.
Really? I hadn't noticed.
But you never know.
No, that's right.
I'm not talking about fall town meeting, Sam, I'm talking about the, the public hearing for the uh.
Oh.
Oh, I think there's a lot of, lot of interest in the ADU, I, I, we might be surprised.
Hopefully, hopefully.
Yeah, that's gonna be good.
Good, okay, so we can, let's move on to accessory dwelling units by law.
Need to give it the paragraph treatment again. Only Sue can do that, though.
All right, let me see if I can, oh, I need to stop.
Highlighted, actually on my screen it is anyway, the thing up at the top.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, that's good, that's.
That good?
Yeah.
So the, the one thing that you, um, Sam has asked if you would decide between, that we have two choices for how we define a dwelling unit, they're very, very similar. I think Sam's always, preference is always to align with the Mass State Building Code, because then he has the same definition with both within his zoning and the building code, so if you're okay with. If you're okay with this one.
That's why I liked that one, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I'm all for it, let's, let's revert to standards whenever possible.
Yep.
By the way, I feel like I have a split personality at times with the different meanings of words.
Uh, up above, uh, Sue, um, I'm sorry to be pedantic, but
That's okay.
Or detached from should have a comma after from.
Indeed.
Thanks.
Yes, of course. Um, and then I've, Tim suggested that um whenever we use accessory dwelling unit, it should be the capitalized version, so you'll see that.
And why not capitalizing town? I think town should be capitalized.
Well, typically, so this is totally up to you all. Typically, when you're talking about a geographic region rather than the town as an entity, um, it's not capitalized, but I'm happy to turn it back if you like that.
I call this entity, this looks entity to me.
I, I defer to Tim Cronin's judgment on this.
I like that.
Yeah, you know which way he's going to go, right? That's such a softball.
Oh, I didn't.
I think Ray did, though.
No, no, I just.
Surprised.
Just, you know.
Now, when you say in the town.
I'd still capitalize.
Still good, it's, it's this specific town as a, as a, it serves for the town of West Newbury, it's shorthand.
Okay.
It is, yeah.
Sorry, Sue.
No, it's perfectly good, as long as I have a, as long as I have a clear direction, because that's just one of those things that people will.
Hey Sue, can we just pause on that purpose section if that's where you were?
Purpose.
Yeah, and the, uh, it's, um, it, it could be fine, I just want to bring it up one more time, where it says increase the potential for rental housing in the town.
Mm-hmm.
Um. All of these criteria are subject to, you know, the general bylaws of the town and things like that. Um, that one seems to get folks' attention. So is there any sort of clarification we want to say about the nature of the rental housing, or just leave it as rental housing?
How about this, if we took it out altogether and relied on A, which is we're increasing the number of small dwelling units, I think we should be silent on the, on the topic of whether these get rented or bequeathed to your daughter, you know.
Yep, it's a very good suggestion, yep.
I'm okay with deleting it, although I, I do think that is one of the purposes, but I think if it, if it makes things go more smoothly in town meeting and whatnot, I'm okay with deleting that.
Well, it's arguable. Arguable that any dwelling unit in town could be a rental unit.
I agree.
Well, they can.
Yes, so, so I don't think calling it out.
My house.
Yeah, so I don't, I think making that distinction ill serves us, I agree, I think. But, I don't know.
That was, that's why I bring it up again, I.
I know.
Yeah.
Thank you for.
Deb, how do you feel? You okay with that?
I'm, I'm ambivalent about it, I, I, I think people should have the right to rent, but I think taking, not mentioning it doesn't take away anybody's rights, so I, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if the question is asked, is it, are, can these be rented, and we would say yes, ask can any unit in town?
Right.
Or something like.
Yep.
Yep, so, all right, good point.
Um.
And, and it looks like D, it does say provide homeowners with a means of obtaining rental income. Are we gonna leave that in?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Should we say potential means? Or is that just not necessary?
I think it's.
All potential, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it's fine like that.
Okay.
Um, what was E, um, it is now D, um, about encouraging a more economic and it says energy efficient use?
Yeah, what's that mean?
I don't, yeah, it's a fit, efficient, I don't. I don't think you need energy efficient.
Why is? What does that mean? It doesn't change the housing supply, it might be a more economic and efficient use of the town's land, which I don't know that we want to get into.
I, I think just deleting the word energy is fine, because.
Believe it as it is.
Yeah, I mean, if, it's not like it requires it, but if you have an in-house in-law apartment, that's efficient use of the housing supply.
Yeah, it is, right.
Like if you take the basement and convert it into an in-law.
That's true, that's true, good point, yes, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Now, we're not building bigger houses, we're putting more people in a more efficient space.
Right, right, yeah, good, good catch.
Okay, now, do we get into nine hundred square feet yet?
Nine hundred.
It's the capital.
Anything above it, you need a special permit.
Okay.
So this, just a small Roman numeral three does mean that if there is a two-family house on a lot, whoever gets in there first with an ADU wins, is that right?
Yes, unless they apply for a special permit.
Ah, okay. Which they could.
And, uh, you know, I, this one kind of makes me grumbly, but this is also one of those things where I think getting this bylaw in place and then seeing if we need to tweak it five years down the road makes sense to me.
True, true.
Right.
We never get it right the first time, as much as we agonize.
Except, except when it comes to marrying my wife.
Well, right, I'm talking about planning board by law.
Deb, you make sure that you mention this, won't you?
I was gonna say she on.
It's recorded for everyone to hear, right?
There you go, okay.
I didn't get it right the first time.
There you go.
Okay, uh, what section, I, I still can't see the screen, so what, what section?
Brian, so sorry. Um, we're continuing to go down through the use and dimensional regulations, so it talks about the residence, the resident principal dwelling must continue to occupy at least one separate entrances, um, secondary, no new curb cuts, off-street parking provided for all residents. Um, and you, the fact that you can't separate it from the principal dwelling through a condominium cooperative.
Remember that, yes.
Yep, sorry, and then prioritizations of a building permit, um, the notarized letter um, has to go to the building inspector, so there was a question about must it also be recorded in the County Registry of Deeds?
Yeah, I flagged that for discussion.
Yep, other communities have that, but Tim also flagged that.
Yeah, yeah, it's been a long time since I did real estate title work, but I, I don't remember ever seeing a letter like this recorded, so. I, I think we're going to run this also by town council, right?
Yes.
I'm not sure I would want that in there.
The same.
What?
I, I hear where you're coming from.
It becomes an encumbrance in a way when someone goes to search or sell or whatever. Uh, you know, it's, it's potential for putting off a potential buyer when they might, you know, not going to, not be going to use it this way, so.
So we do have a provision in Groveland to register these letters. And the only thing it serves to do is annoy the people at the Registry of Deeds.
Right.
Don't like it, they're not happy to get them, they didn't even want us to um submit them initially, but because it's in our bylaw, we work something out with them where they, they have accepted it with certain information. Um, I don't think it serves as a deterrent or anything else. Uh, with the permitting uh system that we have, we could attach that letter to the address and flag the address so that anytime something comes up related to that property and permitting, it, it flags me and, and literally will put a red flag on my screen that says you need to stop and read prior to moving forward, so.
Yeah, let's, uh, yeah.
It's a good idea now that you've got electronic files like that, that makes a lot of sense.
That in-house, hey, can we go back up to the parking thing? This bugs me because you can have residents that don't need or want off-street parking.
Well, everybody has to have off-street for the seasonal, so. There, there is no on-prey in the winter, I think that's what it's referring to.
I, you know, I'd be fine with something like off-street parking shall be provided as necessary for residents or something like that, but I mean, you can have residents that aren't driving, right? You could have in-laws without their, their, uh, you know, the driver's licenses or whatnot, does this mean that they have to have off-street parking even though they don't have a car?
Well, but Ray, it doesn't say any number of spaces, to me, this sort of goes to the, the uh relatively nonspecific leash law type thing where you, you know, you have the language so that when you need to enforce, you can enforce. Um, but you're not being prescriptive upfront. I think it's.
You, you don't know, that there may be turnover in these places, uh, six months in, six months out, somebody there. I think it's, the general note is, there's got to be parking a lot provided.
Okay, well, is this just, this is, this is just one of my little pet peeve things, so I'm, I'm fine with just remaining, you know, bugged by this and letting it go.
If we put a period after provided, would everyone be happy then?
I, I would be happier, but uh.
Does it seem sufficient to the pro parking set?
Read it again then, since I can't see it.
Thank, thank you, so it, um, it says off-street parking shall be provided for all residents. And I think that mimics your current parking regulations, which doesn't give Sam much help when he's trying to decide. Help when he's trying to decide well how much is necessary, but I believe that's what it says.
Adequate parking shall be provided. Which normally in your bylaws, you have for a specific use, a number of cars per whatever. Um, or parking spaces for whatever. Uh, ours just says adequate parking.
So should we, should we mimic that adequate off-street parking shall be provided?
Oh, I like that phrase, but Sam, I why this one now, I I feel like we should word this exactly how Sam wants it worded.
Sam likes numbers, he just told us that.
Careful what you ask for, yeah.
There are houses in town with, we'll call it, this is a real thing, a two-car garage, a quite short driveway. A father, a mother, and two adult children, and the cars are one, two, three, four, you know. Doubled, and I may not like the way it looks, but they have four cars in their family and they get them off the street. Is that adequate? For them, it is. They're off the street. I don't feel like we should say, I I I think being a little nonspecific is kind of our friend here.
Yeah, well, I agree, but I mean, like, I I'm okay with adequate off-street parking shall be provided. I think that's good if Sam likes that.
Yeah, I'm with with Ray until we fix or get an actual parking table. Um. That's right now what our zoning says is provide adequate parking. I I think having, when you have an in-law to provide adequate parking, uh, is adequate.
There you go.
I agree.
Yeah, we don't have to look for that, but it just has to work.
By the way, and your your scenario there is incorrect because you've lost one garage space for the bicycles and the lawnmower and.
Oh, in my house, you've lost both. Once you get those trash cans in there too, so yeah.
Gigantic trash cans, yeah.
I haven't parked in my garage in twenty years.
Uh, we're just going with provided period?
Adequate.
If it parallels what we say other places, you know, I think there's a certain defensibility to that.
That's fine. I'm 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 good with that.
Yep.
Thank you. I appreciate your intelligence. I feel, I'll I'll sleep better now.
There you go.
Alright, so the other thing that was changed, um, since our last discussion was. We talked, you decided at the last meeting about, um, period of absence and and what you said was for a period of less than one year. Um, and that the owner may rent the owner's unit as well as the second year unit during those temporary absences. Um, there were two in the model that we were looking at, which was, I think, from Lexington or or some. Other community, they had two requirements. One was written notice shall be made to the building inspector on a form. Prescribed by the building inspector about for those absences, so when someone leaves, they need to let the building inspector know. The other one, it says the owner shall be a resident on the property for at least two years. Prior to and between such temporary absences. I think some folks may want to.
I I would say.
Decide if that's helpful.
I would, I would make that one year prior and in between, but that's just me.
Okay, I want to push, I'll push it to the limit and say. The idea of requiring that at all is to.
Make sure the owner.
Put a stumbling block for the owner occupancy to not be. Uh, trampled on, okay, alright.
But to not be permanently gone, you know. Come back and you you know, um. I don't know, walk around the house for half an hour and then take off again.
Tim, you have thoughts on that?
I do. Um, so. I don't mind it in theory. The 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 problem I see with it is. We're regulating the honest. Um, the the dishonest are still gonna do what they're gonna do. Usually with these types of things, it would be a neighbor diming them out, saying, hey, they've been gone and renting this place for however long.
Yeah.
Um, I'd be fine with after temporary absence, putting a period and deleting the others. If you feel the two conditions. Help or add weight to it. Um, I don't have a problem with it either, but. Uh, the reality is kind of like enforcing an in-law apartment, you know, when I go and knock on the door and say related, the honest say, no, we're not. And I take enforcement action, the dishonest say, yeah, it's my cousin. Um, sort of the same thing here. They're gonna give me a piece of paper saying. You know, I I swear, um. I don't know, I I it. I'm just not sure how enforceable it would be or how.
Who's gonna do the counting?
I I I I agree, Sam. I think the only time, I think this does. I think it makes clear to the public at large what the intention is. And so it gives guidance to people who want to be honest and straightforward about it. And then the other thing I think it does is if there does, if there is an issue. If somebody does, you know, cause a kerfuffle about it. At least you can point to this language and say, you know what, you you you, you're not doing this.
Yeah, like I don't think it hurts anything, and yeah, it certainly could, uh, at least. Help with the folks that do let me know, so if I get a complaint. Um, it's just one of the, you know, it it's kind of, I could take it.
I get it, I get it. There's there's a bunch of stuff that exists like that where it's not a, it's not a big deal until it's a big deal. I and I don't envy you your job in a lot of ways.
Yeah.
But I I also think too, politically, I think this makes the public hearing and the town meeting go better. Because it's it's clear what the intention is here. But we need to resolve the the two-years-one-year thing. All their planning board members, I'm voting to change that highlighted two to one year, but I don't know what the rest of you think.
I I I still like the one year, but. You know, I'm I'm open to hearing comments.
I like one year.
Well, again, let's start with one year and see. If there's a, or not. This is a starting point.
Okay.
Brian, for you, the next one is a principal dwelling. When it's sold, um. The new buyer has thirty days to submit a notarized letter to the building inspector stating that they'll occupy one of the dwelling units.
Right.
And I've removed the notarized letter as we have previously.
Yeah, that that was my note that I had, so that's fine by me.
So that one's tricky though, because of flagging that doesn't help Sam. He's not necessarily gonna know when a property changes. So how do we?
Okay, sorry, I'm gone.
How do we, uh? You know, so track that.
Yeah, and this is the only, this is where the discussion of recorded. Came in with Groveland, because when it's recorded, then there's notice and it's done. Um. One, I would say, uh, well, I guess two things, the the thirty days is way short. Um, if we could change that to sixty days. Uh, I I just recently came to one where the. Uh, he he, you know, by the time we got everything squared away, he got me the notarized version. I sent him back the approval. He got it recorded at Landport. It was fifty-seven days. Um. Granted, you know, we worked together, it wasn't a big deal, uh, but. Thirty, I think, would just make everyone non-compliant, just out of. People are busy and trying to get a day where you can get to the, uh, get to these things is tough. Uh, but yeah, I don't know. I'm not sure what, um. What would be the trigger for letting me know that something sold?
That's for kiddos.
I think we could, can we mute, uh? And James?
Oh, okay, sorry, I didn't. The background was coming from.
Yeah, we have a, we have a yelling two-and-a-half-year-old, I apologize.
No worries.
No worries, if we just mute, that's fine.
And I know that, uh, Ms. Richardson has, uh, her hand up.
Yeah, is it okay if I speak for just one sec?
Sure.
Uh, and I don't know if this is helpful. If it isn't, we can just move on, but I I can can we go back just? I just want to say this, the the part about the owner shall be resident on the property for at least one year. So as a resident who's interested in an ADU, I'm confused by that, so I just want to bring that up so you all know that. Like, what's your, what are you, what is it you're trying to accomplish? That the resident be a full-time resident in the property? Like, what are you trying to avoid?
I I I I hope I'm speaking correctly for others when I say we're trying to avoid, uh, people that come in, buy a whole bunch of properties. Get two units on each property and become sort of a rent lord in the background.
Okay. Great, okay. I guess I just wanted to be a voice that says, I I wonder, I mean. You all know, like you said, you'll have a town meeting and you'll be able to answer that question like you just did for me, and that may be enough. I get what you're saying now.
Now, I appreciate, I appreciate your asking the question.
There's room, there's certainly room to debate that, um. But. You know, my gut says it's the best way to start at the moment.
Yeah, I agree with that. I was just saying that that statement, um, somehow. Doesn't, didn't state that directly, like, which is the owner may not, um. But whatever, it's fine, it's totally fine. It really is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, so on the, uh, I'm I'm still against recording anything, even if it's a sale document. It just seems like an onerous burden. Uh. On 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 this, um, both both for. You know, the the, uh, the seller and also what the registry is, Sam noted. I I'm not sure the benefit of that.
Well, I don't want it filed at the registry of deeds, but I don't mind having, you know, the planning office. Just accepting a a letter.
Of the building inspector. Yeah, I'm just wondering if, you know, um. There, so Sam, there's not any, you don't get regularly notified about changes of ownership in town, is that correct, or? How do we?
No, but that that could be something. I was thinking about it while you were were talking, and it could be something as simple as asking the assessor's office. That when they have a property with an ADU sell, to just notify me. Um, that's not a heavy lift on their part. They go through the sales, uh, if they just have a notation that. You know, please give me a heads up. I think that's probably adequate to, you know, give me a heads up. The, uh, only other thing I had a question on, just going back to, um. Cheryl's comment on that number two, it just made me think if I'm coming into town. And need the unit for legitimate reasons, and I'm looking for a house where I can move, have my in-laws or, you know, a. A parent, is there a a mechanism through special permit to waive that? Or?
To waive what?
That they gotta be.
One year.
First, yeah, I I agree with Sam, I I have a.
Oh, I see.
Cause now I'm looking for houses, and I need that. Now West Newbury is not a contender for me to look at buying a house.
It is, you just have to move to West Newbury. And live and live there a year before you took off and left and left, uh, your father-in-law behind in that.
Yeah, I mean, if you're looking for a place to move to parts of your family.
Oh, 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 I'm I'm sorry, I'm I'm partially reading and confusing myself. That's regarding the temporary absence. Sorry, never mind. I'm. It it's past getting close to bedtime, so.
All right, no problem.
You you and the two-year-old, both, yeah.
So are we going to change the thirty-day notice to sixty days? Uh, when a property is sold, as Sam noted?
Yes.
I I think so.
That's more the march of things between the assessor's office and Sam's office and.
I I think that'd be fine, but I I'd be fine with that, but other members. Yeah.
The goal is to get it done, not to have another gun to your head when you're in the middle of a move, I think.
Right, right.
Yep.
Okay, I think I'm hearing from Sue, you can make a note of that? Yeah, I I'm in the dark.
I know.
Okay, I don't know what's going on, never seen this.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm trying to keep you appraised, yeah, I was muted there. So the next one is about the, just saying that if, for a special permit, if you need some, if you want something in excess of nine hundred. Square feet that you would request a special permit.
From the planning.
Yes, yep, from the planning board. Um, and the next one is administration enforcement saying it's the building inspector. Um, and no building shall be constructed without a building permit. Um, nor occupied until a occupancy permit, and that is the end of the pretty straightforward bylaw.
Yep.
Ever round of applause, everybody?
Yes, I think this is a great accomplishment, a good first pass anyway.
Yeah.
First pass. Yeah.
Uh, is everyone comfortable? That we can, uh, move forward and say this is going to be, uh, the article for the public hearing on this. And and any changes from that will go to town meeting or will determine what course of action to take.
Yeah, is is the public, is the public hearing the Land U Summit, or this is a different?
Public hearing.
Okay.
I don't know if we have picked a date yet, Sue, but.
Um, you have, we have not picked a date for the public hearing.
Okay.
But we can certainly do that tonight if you want, or we can, or at least.
Yeah, we need to work around other.
What, what? Let's, let's just take a look at what, uh.
Well, when's town meeting? October twenty-something?
So let me get that back up here for you.
Two weeks is the legal requirement, but I'd rather have more time for changes.
I'd either say the September nineteenth or October third.
Yeah.
And and I'd probably say the nineteenth. Give us a little extra time if we had any substantive changes or thoughts about this.
So this is at our usual.
Yes.
Second planning board meeting. It's just that it will be a public hearing, we'll post that this is a topic for consideration. Public, thank you.
Does that seem good to people?
Yep.
Yes.
If it fits with everything else we have to do in September.
And so I'm sorry, I was trying to find the, uh. I was trying to find this.
We're talking September nineteenth, Sue.
Okay, thanks. Perfect, thanks.
Okay.
These things don't, you know, I mean, they typically don't take. A long time, but you never know, you know, could be just a quick half hour, give that.
I almost dared, don't dare bring it up, but is there a? Uh. Request, however formal or informal, from the select board or others to see this language?
So, yes.
Yes, and that's the next, well.
So let me try to find that.
Yeah, they they want to see these things.
Okay, yeah, so can you all see the article request form?
Yes, most of us can.
Yeah, so Brian, I have the article request form up.
Yep, I've seen it, yeah, I've looked at it.
So you may, as you may know, that. They're typically about money, uh, which is why it says amount requested, but I think we just kind of. Fill it in as if it, there's no amount, but we, they'll want to know why we're. Um, putting this forth, and I'm happy to to pull up a draft of this. So I know we want the ADU, and I know we want the non-conforming use. Um, and those are the two that I know of right now.
Yeah, they don't, they'll each be on a separate form.
Yes, they would each have a separate form.
Right, and all the, all the financial parts are just NA and the rest is.
Yes.
Our usual sentence or two of of explanation of.
Yes, so they want that, um. So these, I wanted to include this in your packet, so you would have the, when the warrant is closing, so that's September fifth. So I will get this request in no later than August thirty-first. But I can do it much quicker than that.
Great.
Okay, and if you're not, if you're okay with not doing it at a formal meeting, I I'll send it around to Tim or whoever. Who wants to kind of review my, the draft, or we can take it up at another. Meeting before.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll just quickly cover it at the fifteenth, just to see where we are.
Okay.
Um, anyway.
Okay.
Couldn't take long, yeah.
It 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 shouldn't to put that together and, you know, if we can get it to them even earlier, all are better for.
Yep, okay.
We have other things to look at, too.
I'll give them the heads up that those are the two coming in anyway.
Sure.
Now, do you also want me to send those now that we've finalized both of those to the, um, to town council?
I suppose, you probably need to check with Angus, obviously, on that. You know, I think that would be typical to, we're comfortable and see what they have to say.
Okay.
Not that I don't like hanging with you guys, but if you don't need me, I'm checking out.
You're all good, thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate the effort, too.
Thanks.
Good night.
Okay, next item on the agenda, Sawmill Brookland Purchase Update and Deb Hamilton, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So this morning-
Can you stop the screen there?
Yes.
Sorry, Deb.
No problem. I had a call from Michelle Green, the conservation agent. She had met with Mike Crowe regarding the detention basins and the infrastructure that Ray alluded to earlier, that they seem to be working properly. But I wanted some clarity on the trail easement situation. Since the town and Greenbelt are very much interested in the acquisition of the Sawmill Brook property formerly owned by Mr. Austin, or currently owned by Mr. Austin. I wanted to make sure that we were all in agreement about exactly where the trail was going to go, how it was going to link, who was going to take care of it, when it was going to be built and maintained. And as of this morning, we're going to be putting together a site walk that includes Carol Lloyd, our trail director from ACTA. ACTA will hold the trail easement across the Deer Run property. Actually holds it already, it's been, I believe it's been approved by everybody that needs to approve it. According to Mike, the trail is pretty much following the pre-existing trail. I also asked whether his Realtor could come on the site walk so that we're sure that the situation is correctly represented to prospective buyers. I've seen too many instances where people buy a property and take it upon themselves to undo trail easements that have been established by previous owners. So I thought it was important that that be clarified upfront. So that's going to happen next week. And Greenbelt is moving ahead quickly along with Annie Madden, Patricia Reiser, John, 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 you know, open space.
Dodge.
Dodge.
John Dodge, yep. And Vanessa, Greenbelt, so we're planning to do promotions various places. Do the fundraising that was done both for Grant Family Farm and the River Road property a couple of years ago. The goal is to raise $130,000 by December 1st as the, we'll call it the Greenbelt contribution to the CPA funds that were already voted at town meeting. And there's, there's grant money that should be coming in. But we're going to try to promote this everywhere we can to townspeople. I think clearly, most of that $130,000 is going to need to come from individuals in town. So we're going to promote it at the band concerts. Perhaps do a fundraiser, we'll do sightwalks. PTO events. Our own Ian James, I understand, is very interested in, in helping to-
Actually, I have an update on this. Yeah, go ahead, please.
Yeah. Yeah, go again.
No, no, I don't want to interrupt you. So I was fortunate enough, and apologies, our little party crashers still hanging out down here, but Kathy, it's either Lenois or Lenoy, the mother.
Lenoy.
Destroying her name.
Lenoy.
Lenoy, excellent. Yeah, we were able to meet and have coffee for a couple hours yesterday. It's funny, I think I saw, I think I saw you down in downtown Newburyport, Anne, yesterday. But you were far enough away where it would have been a little too tough to flag you down. So it was the whole planning board affair. But yeah, we spoke for a couple of hours. She kind of introduced me to the program. We talked a lot about the Sawmill project in particular and what the plans were. I think the fundraising, alluding to the, you know, funding gap that we do have. Talking about how we could do that in a way to engage multi-generational members of the town. You know, how the town could help either through, you know, lending space for some type of fundraising event or, you know, something along those lines. They could, you know, just kind of defray the costs or any costs related to this and focus on what we do collect going towards, going towards the funding gap. So productive conversation, I think I'm going to join a few calls on Greenbelt and related to this. I think she said they're setting up a committee with people in town government for that. You know, I told her I'd love to help with that. And, you know, yeah, it was, for me, it was just a really great introduction, understand how the organization works and how it works with municipalities in Essex County. And she did say West Newbury was the most conservation-friendly town in the county. So either she was making me feel good or telling the truth, you guys can help me discern that.
We've worked hard to get that reputation.
Excellent.
People at ACTA have the same admiration for the fact that we have protected as much as we can. So that's the status there. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to field them.
Do we know when the sidewalk will be?
The sidewalk with the four of us is someday next week. It's, it's in the email, you know. People are locking in. Would you like to be in?
No, I just, I didn't understand if it was a public thing or what the-
There will, there will be public, there will be public walks.
Okay.
Probably in October.
Okay.
Yeah, but, but we'll be promoting the fundraising and, and, you know, everywhere that we can and-
Okay.
Yeah, the community sidewalks, let's see. Oh, here we go. We're going to, they're contemplating community sightwalks on Thursday, September 14th at 5:00 PM and Sunday, October 1st at noon. So those-
Deb, who's picking up on the, the grant application for the town? Is somebody in town government doing that?
I, my sense is that Greenbelt is, is trying to coordinate that. Vanessa and Kathy. The people who were in on the meeting this morning included Patricia Reiser, Annie Madden, and John Dodge and myself. But they didn't, that wasn't a topic of conversation beyond the fact that we needed to raise $130,000 in order to take less of the CPA $350,000 that was voted at town meeting.
Well, yeah, but I have to keep in mind that the $350,000 was voted on the premise that there was going to be a substantial land grant available.
Right, and, and that is in the, in the literature that's being put together, it addresses it. And I'm sorry, I didn't make more conscientious notes about that.
Brian, when I last spoke with Angus, he was, I think he felt like he was taking the lead on it, him.
Good.
Okay, I mean, yeah, I mean, that, that question will come up for anybody that you're, you know, going out on these walks and saying, you know, where is the grant money? What's happening? Is, you know, all that, so.
But I'll try to get better answers.
Okay.
Yeah, I talked to Kathy. I thought that maybe Ian will know better. That maybe Greenbelt was looking for grants and that the focus here is the sort of, the public fundraising, which Greenbelt will do widely, but of course, would love to have great participation by citizens of this town who are so inclined.
Right.
Yeah, I assume that's the idea.
Including riding and driving club, the garden club, the West Newbury Wild and Native, the tree committee. I mean, clearly, open space is the first and prime mover on this, but there are so many overlapping continued groups that are going to be interested. I think at PTO, this is a great asset for our children and, and I think getting little kids, middle school kids, high school kids, you know, involved. Having the trees and Mill Pond have a tree, since there's already a tree walk there. It's a, it's a wonderful resource area and, and this additional 32 acres just makes it better.
Deb, is, is the conservation agent going on that walk?
Yes.
Is she the fourth? Thanks.
Yes, yes.
And, and that's a good point, that the fundraiser would be, listen, we don't discriminate. Money can come from anyone, any resident of any town. But the idea would be, you know, it'd be nice to possibly, like I said, defray the costs with it being hosted in West Newbury, maybe in a public space, if that made sense. But yeah, you know, whether you're from Boston or New York City, we'll take your money for the fundraising.
We, we had, we ran a moonlight, moonrise, sunset trail ride night before last. The only good night we've had this summer. It was fabulous. We had 24 riders and most from New Hampshire. But it was a great success, a lot of fun.
Awesome.
Beautiful.
Perfect, keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item up for us, review of the minutes of 6:20.
Okay, let me find those.
And I have read those, so if they don't come up, I'm okay.
Next 20, I have those, let me share. Can you see these?
No, they're still-
Yes.
We'll have to work on this, Sue, at some point.
All right. Did anyone have any changes? This was the one that covered the MBTA Communities Housing Opportunities Community Forum.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's a pretty brief recap because it does refer people that want to know more to look at the stuff on the website, so.
Yes.
It's not a ton of detail here.
Which is fine.
Yeah, which is fine. It's appropriate, I think. Yeah, it's great. So there's not too much to read. It looked fine to me.
A move, we approve them.
Second.
How was in favor?
Ann Bardini, aye.
Rick Cook, aye.
Deb Hamilton, aye. Never can hear Tim.
No.
Ryan Murphy, aye. I think I heard Tim in the background there. Okay, five, five zero, good. All right, correspondence? Sue?
Yeah, so Groveland. We had a number of them. A permit for dwelling unit with three or more families.
Wait, wait, well, let's see where that was.
I'm sorry, did you want to see?
Yeah, just read, let me see.
183 Main Street. Oh, no, that's where the town, One Manor Drive. Building two.
Is that one of the lots on the West Newbury Town Line?
No, I don't think so. It's just in a budding town, I think.
I think there's some apartment buildings in there. Isn't that opposite the town offices, Manor Drive?
I just know it's for a-
Well, I just know there were a couple of lots subdivided from the first lot on, well, it'd be the last lot on Middle Street and the first lot on Center Street.
No, 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 this is something to do with multifamily.
Yeah, they're amending a special permit for, to add on a third floor.
Okay, thank you, never mind.
Yeah, that's all right. Another one for Groveland. This one's on Sixth Union Street.
Accessory apartment.
Yes, but detached.
So they're looking for a variance, whoa.
Yeah. Our buy-off will be better than this.
We'll spare people that problem.
The next one is Haverhill. Special permit to build a three-family at 66 Riverdale.
Friend attorney Milliori, he was somebody's attorney that we saw, I forget who.
They're, they sold Grove Street.
He's, yeah, there's two of them. One on Lot 2 and the other one was on Lot 1. So it's looking to build two, three families. And then Newbury Port.
What's this one about?
A joint public hearing.
It's a zoning, I can't read it. Scroll down a little, we'll find it.
Presenting your testimony. Proposed zoning amendments.
Changing the table of use regulations.
To add short-term rentals.
That's right.
Rentals, well, we'll see how that comes out.
Oh, yeah.
It's been, that's been a contentious one there for a while.
So they're doing that on?
August 16th.
I was having trouble finding it. Oh, they're just August 16th.
Okay, well.
I think that's it.
Be interesting.
What's next, Brian?
The, your scenic road application.
Ah-ha.
Sue said, I just couldn't believe we didn't have an official application.
All right.
They cranked it right out.
I thought we had a procedure written down somewhere, though.
You do have a procedure and I captured that in the procedures part of this, but there wasn't an application, so when folks called me and said, what do I do? I said, well, you write a letter. Tell us what you want to do. And I just thought, well, it seems like, you know, rather than walk them through everything that they needed to include in the letter, it would be easy to do an application. So I found a number of them online and just put together one. They seem to be almost all very, very similar. And then the, and then I just changed the procedure to exactly follow the procedures that we have now.
All right, two thumbs up from the barn.
Yes. A procedure with an application form.
Yeah, no, I think it looked pretty good to me.
Very wonderful. Thank you, Sue.
Yeah, of course.
Now, who is the tree warden? Is that Sam?
So the, no, he has a lot of hats and that's not one of them.
That's not one.
It's the DP, it's the DPW.
So that's a little up in the air.
Yep, so right now, Butch is the acting tree warden, or Richard Hall, Hills.
Okay, I just didn't know if there was somebody else that we wanted to take a look at this form, but I would say in the absence of that position being filled, it's probably not necessary.
Yep.
Yeah, I think as, as we get a, we'll, we'll get one in and test it out and if we need to tweak it.
Yeah, exactly. That's great.
So, I think.
Make a point once and save a lot of trouble down the road.
Yeah, yeah.
Super.
Is there, is there a place I need to stop by and, and the 1910 building and add a gold star to your?
There you go.
Maybe you just want to put it on top of the building.
Or do you prefer dinosaur stickers?
Maybe, you know, maybe I can get, you know, a flashing star in my window, kind of like the, you know, Elon Musk's big X.
No lighted signs in West Newbury.
Oh, darn.
Right, Ray, you're right there.
Very nice, very nice. He's up on all the pedagogy, you don't, you know.
Okay, next is placement of items for future agendas.
Oh, I wanted to ask too, is there a planner's report? Here it is. It's not on-
I have it up, was it not in the?
It's not, but I think it's kind of an administrative detail myself.
So there really, it was quite-
I'd have said it, but I can't see it, so.
Sorry, yeah, it's quite short. I really just kind of briefly went over what you already know. So with the Housing Opportunities Initiative, the ADU bylaw, but I, and the housing production plan. I do want to bring up two things. So the August 15th meeting is looking pretty full. And we can talk about that next, but the consultant team is able to present concept plans then. If you prefer, if the board- If you prefer, if the board prefers, we could push that until September fifth, so. Um, I just want you to consider what's going on on the fifteenth, um, in terms of permitting that we need to touch base on, and we'll talk about that more, I guess, when we talk about what's on that next agenda.
Do we have applications to consider?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, but let's, you want to finish the report first? We'll come back to that.
And the only other thing that I wanted to say is, um, the Land Management and Planning Summit is kind of, Angus is, um, off this week. I guess he, there was a meeting last week that I didn't make, and they were kind of wondering if they're going to be able to pull this together. So it's kind of up in the air, and I haven't had a chance to, um, talk to Angus about it. So we're still kind of saying this is what we'll do, but it may get pulled. And if that's the case, then we'll have our own, you know, opportunity for a public forum with the with the, um, with our consultant.
Well, is that
It's two separate things, though, right?
Well, we were going to use this Land Management and Planning Summit to kind of have some interaction with the community. Um, lacking that, we can still have something, we can still do something else.
Well, like what?
So if, just another meeting, yeah, another meeting.
Really?
So that there'll be an opportunity to to be iterative in this process. So on the fifteenth or the September fifth, when they next come back, they'll show the concept plans. Um, they'd love to hear the interactions, and then if they get a lot of interaction or a lot of input, that would be another opportunity to to, um, advance those concept plans or tweak them to to get them more in aligned with the community's thinking, so.
But are they thinking about another in-person charrette type of a thing?
Oh, no, not an in-person.
Okay.
Just another chance to check in.
Yeah, well, before we commit, let's make sure we check on that. I there's, there's timing issues there. Um, I I I'm going to miss the mid-October meeting anyway, so, um, but. Okay, so let's, let's just circle back and talk about August fifteenth and and Dodson and Flinker's thing. Do they say how long they might want to talk?
Um, I think if we're look, thinking about other presentations that they've made, I think it would be, you know, these are going to be concept plans. I think people would be fairly, if they're going to be there, I'd want to, you know, get as many people to attend as possible. And I would think that an hour wouldn't be unreasonable to to look at concept plans for the, you know, three or more sites that they're looking at. So I think it would kind of take some time for people, for them to present, and for people to really think about them and give valuable feedback.
Okay. Um, all right, so then we have an application, uh, that's going to be before the board on the fifteenth for an A and R on Crane Next Street. And it's the, uh, um, Bill Spalding's property. Uh, and he's going to file for a reduced frontage lot with the A and R, and also a common driveway permit. Uh, basically looking for one lot. So Sue and I talked about this, and you know, we we have, the A and R is fairly straightforward, and it would be labeled as a, not a building lot until he seeks, you know, the the reduced frontage. We would have that hearing, or at least open that hearing on the fifteenth. And my guess is that we might want to take a, do a site walk uh, down there. Uh, which means, you know, we'll get into the, we'll listen to it, hear his thinking, maybe if there's any comments from people. Um, and then certainly continue the hearing. And the common driveway hearing would would run, you know, concurrently with with this. Either way, we're going to have this on both September, uh, on the first of September. And, uh, it might go to the third September, depending on a site walk timing for everybody. So, you know, I, so when I thought we could open the reduced frontage and still get Dodson and Flinker in, probably not start them until eight fifteen, maybe, something like that. Give Bill Spalding a, uh, an hour.
And you also have the tree hearing.
Yeah, that's, yeah, and and now we we also have Mr. Crow, who's going to chew up about ten minutes of our time.
And we also said we would look at those draft warrant articles, which shouldn't take long, but still.
Yeah. So
Why do you think, why do you think Spalding will take an hour?
Well, it's, it's just the the procedural, the A and R is quick, is easy, but then we will open a special, it's a special permit hearing um, for the reduced frontage lot. And we're going to look at it, we're, and I don't, we're certainly not going to make a decision that night. And, uh, the same for the common driveway. I haven't seen the layout, but as Sue described it to me, it's seems reasonable, but, um, it it'll take an hour. It probably will take an hour.
Yeah, I think so.
So, you know, we 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 have several things. And that's why I'm not sure if we if we, I don't, I'm not sure we're going to accomplish a heck of a lot more with Spalding's hearing. And, uh, you know, we 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 have our Flinker's presentation. It's either going to be that night, or they'll be back to back on September fifth.
Yeah.
One or the other.
Mm-hmm.
But given that we have all that other, those slightly lesser, but still three or four other things to accomplish.
Right, right.
I'm also thinking about Dodson and Flinker. Don't you think we'll get uh, more, uh, reliable public attendance if we wait till that first September meeting? I still feel like an awful lot of people are away, a bunch of these different
As if people, their brains are turning, you know. August might be a decent summer month, and that's it. July was not.
I know.
Uh, I I I, yes, I'm concerned about that, yes.
Hmm.
So I I have no problem pushing Flinker off to the fifth.
And they've, they've said that they're fine either way.
Okay.
Anybody else's thoughts? I know, you 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 don't want a late meeting in in mid-August, that's for sure.
No.
This early August one is getting kind of tough, and it's only eight thirty.
Yeah, yeah.
Got it.
Yeah. Um, I I, yeah, I I, this is, this is good. I I think we should probably push Flinker off to the fifth.
Okay, I'll certainly be able to do a little more aggressive outreach or more outreach.
Yeah.
Give us a little more time.
Yeah. Um, and Sue, did, did when, has that been advertised yet, the Spalding thing, timing?
Yes.
Yes.
What time was that assigned?
Seven, at a meeting start, at seven, it said.
Yeah, so there's no specific time. It's it's easier that way.
Yes.
Well, don't we need a specific time for the special permit hearing?
What what they've always said in the past, or what the format that is said in the past, it says it will be heard at a meeting started at seven, so.
Okay. Well, that's quicker. We obligated to open it, then because I I I want to get the other couple of things off the table.
No, Brian, I think what
No, it doesn't have to be at seven.
It's going to be during that meeting.
No, sooner than seven.
We aren't committing to a time certain.
Okay. Okay. So that's what we'll do. We'll, we'll push Flinker off, and we'll have, uh, we'll have a, you know, a real application for something before us.
Yeah, so to be clear, we've, I've received all of those applications, the A and R, um, the reduced frontage, the the common drive, and they'll, we'll open them all and continue the ones that need to be continued.
Okay.
Um, so I did want to bring up, I don't know how many of you know where two ninety is for this, the tree hearing. Um, the special permit that you'll need to grant for the tree removal, for the scenic road.
Two ninety what? I don't even know.
Middle Street, I'm sorry.
I didn't know where it was at all. Okay.
Yep, two ninety Middle Street.
Mr. Gorman's property.
Yeah.
Yep, and it, the tree is marked currently with a, um, a ribbon. There's one on each side of the road, but they're only removing the one near the driveway. Um, and the tree warden will, if he didn't post it today, he'll be posting it with an actual hearing notice, um, so you'll know which tree it is. So I don't know if you want to swing by and take a look, or in case you do.
Thank you.
Yeah, good.
Out of curiosity, it's to remove, just to remove that tree for construction of the driveway?
Yes.
Utility pole.
It's for a utility pole.
That's National Grid, the application, I think.
Got it, got it. Yeah, I try about that every day.
Well, it's unfortunate that that wasn't anticipated when we did the initial.
No, we did that already, yeah.
Scenic Road.
There was a gentleman that came in that swore that was already approved, but I don't have anything in the files that says it was.
Well, if the pole wasn't indicated on the plan, then it wasn't, but yeah.
Yeah.
Usually those things, well, they they should be indicated, but who knows?
Well, I think you, it's, it can be notoriously difficult to get National Grid to conform to one's particular timeline on a construction.
Yeah.
And if I remember, we had, we went, that, I thought that needed another iteration. Maybe I'm getting them mixed up of, uh, from the engineer. Uh, there was, I thought there was an issue there with the
Driveway?
Something with that driveway.
Oh, gee.
But we've done several, so maybe I'm confused.
Wow.
Okay, um, other items, anybody have other items? I don't have anything else that, uh, we haven't covered or talked about. No? Okay, we're all happy that the weather, the weather has turned, at least for the moment. Get rid of the rain and the humidity.
I said, I heard this morning on NPR that this was the wettest July in a hundred years.
Yeah, 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 well.
Yes, and last year may have been the driest, so there you go.
Yeah, what a
The trouble with averages, right?
Yes, yeah, you put the two, and it's like, oh, what are you people complaining about?
Well, the weeds are happy along the side of the road and Anne's daylilies.
Yep.
Weeds are happy everywhere at my house.
Yeah.
My, uh, my squash is quite happy. The tomatoes are a bit disappointed.
Yeah, not a great, I'm having trouble with my little cherry ones. I don't, not too much water in the
Water, it leaches all the good stuff out.
Exactly. Okay, anybody else? That's it? Okay, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Hey, all in favor? I, all of us leaving. Thank you, Ian.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good night, everybody.
Good job.